Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Public Meeting, May 23rd, 2019. Please join me in salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2000, 1975 has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, and post on the bulletin board at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. And notice has been provided that this meeting would take place this evening, May 23rd, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pease, Mr. Hasdi, Mr. Devon, Mayor Delcor are absent. Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Committee Member Lapone?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Saraj?
Here. First up, we have consideration of meeting minutes, the meeting minutes of May 9th, 2019. Counselor, who's eligible? I know I'm not.
That's a good question. It would be Mayor Delcor, Mr. Lapone, Mr. Julian, Mr. Sarasi, Mr. Weinstein.
I'll move it.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Committee Member Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraj?
I have to say, I wasn't here for that. Maybe Raj was here, maybe that's...
Yes.
Okay, we have a couple of resolutions, consideration. First up, SGL Properties, File Number 17-PB-08-SP. May I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Committee Member Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Next is Town Center Family Dental, File 18-P-15-MSPV. May I have a motion to move?
I make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Scobbo, move. Mr. Wagner, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussions from the dais? Floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committee Member Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraj?
Yes. We do not have any planning board business this evening, so next is any business from the floor? If anyone would like to address anything with this board on items that are not on this evening's agenda, come forward. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we do not have any ordinances under consideration, so it looks like... First up, I believe we have a, I guess, an adjournment, or do we have to take an action on this one?
This is a, yes, a further adjournment of the Terrace Industrial Park until June 13th, with the requirement that they renotice.
Okay.
But they've also submitted an extension for the time of decision through June 30th.
A move to approve? Second.
Okay, any discussions? From the floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Committee Member Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Saraj?
Yes. Now, we will move on to Emerald Terrace LLC, File 19-PB-01-MSPV. This is carried from our April 11th meeting without further notice, so I will turn it over to Counselor.
Good evening, members of the board. This is the second hearing. Our first hearing was on April 11th for an application seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with bulk variance and waivers necessary to construct a multifamily residential development of 126 units consisting of nine buildings inclusive of 36 COA affordable units. Project has been prepared in accordance with Hillsborough Township Ordinance 2017-20, as adopted on December 12th, 2017, which is consistent with the settlement with the township regarding the township's COA requirement as imposed by the Fair Housing Act, and as implemented through the New Jersey Superior Court, and as memorialized by settlement agreement dated November 20th, 2018. This subject property is located in a GA zone with a multifamily inclusionary overlay and is 9.378 acres in size and proposes all three lots to be consolidated in one lot. In accordance with the ordinance, a 20-foot wide buffer is proposed along the south and east property line where the residential zones or existing residential uses exist consistent with the ordinance. Sidewalks are proposed together with other improvements such as a playground, pathways, benches, and picnic tables for use of the residence. As explained on, at our last hearing in April by Mr. Ford, variances have been identified for the second curb cut onto Amwell Road for ingress and egress, where only one curb cut is permitted by Section 188-113-1F1C, and for a maximum width of the curb cut for the second driveway, where 24 feet is required and 33 feet within non-landscape median is proposed. Lastly, the applicant seeks a waiver for parking buffers under Section 188-68C as a 30-foot wide buffer is required for adjoining streets and property lines, and 6.71 feet is proposed on the westernly property line near the existing Auto Zone. With me tonight, I have three witnesses, Michael Ford, our professional engineer from Van Cleef Engineering Associates, Mark Berkowski, our architect from Berkowsky &amp; Associates, and Art Bernard, our professional planner. Unless there are any legal questions, I would ask to swear in Mike Ford, who has already been sworn in and qualified, to explain just very briefly the minor site change, minor site plan changes as amended in response to comments from the first hearing, and to address any additional questions. I would then intend to move to Mark Berkowski, who will finalize his testimony with respect to the questions the board had regarding the floor plans and the COA units. We have, and I will, and I should probably introduce now, A5, which is a series of architectural plans and building elevation renderings. We've also provided an artistic rendering of the project, which I don't think I need to introduce as an exhibit. We do have, if the board so requests, we can introduce that as A6. And finally, Art Bernard, our planner, will address the variances and wa, the C-bulk variances and waivers necessitated by this site plan.
Try to get the next two votes, nothing but two.
Yes, I do. Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering. Nothing's changed since the April 11th hearing.
I anticipated my question.
Okay.
Proceed, thank you.
Sure. Okay, very briefly, with regards to engineering, site engineering items. At the last hearing, we presented, which was part of the packet of the exhibits, Page 3 of the handouts, I have it on the screen now, where we illustrated an area that was previously to be disturbed for a discharge from the stormwater outfall, which was pulled back and additional plantings. I'd like to just, from, I'll say, housekeeping item, state for the record the numbers with regards to the tree mitigation. As we said at the last hearing, we are not seeking an economic hardship waiver for the tree mitigation requirement. We will provide the required tree mitigation plantings, both onsite and offsite at other properties owned by the applicant. By reducing the amount of onsite trees that are disturbed, our tree mitigation was reduced slightly down to 516 trees from a total of 525 that we had stated at the prior hearing. And this will all be on plans that would be provided in compliance with any approval this board may grant. But the numbers are 560 trees required. Right now, we have 261 trees proposed onsite, which includes an additional 56 in this area here, an open space area that will be placed into a conservation easement. But right now, it's a maintained lawn. And as I, you know, stated at the last hearing, we felt this would also be advantageous to provide even a more substantial buffer than the 20-foot required by the ordinance to one of our residential zone boundaries to the south. That leaves a total of 255 trees to be planted offsite. And I had provided at the last hearing, three exhibits. And there are the next three pages, if you recall, of the other properties where those tree mitigation plantings would be provided and will provide details, including species to be planted, the size of trees, to the sat, you know, the township's planning department staff satisfaction. There was also a question at the last hearing regarding right-of-way and where the offsite sanitary was being placed. That is, we're right now proposing that the sanitary leave the rear of the property or the southerly boundary and then run in an easterly direction along Stymet's Road. There actually is sanitary there now. This would replace the existing sanitary. And there was a neighbor that raised a question about the right-of-way. We've done research and provided a letter to the planning department this afternoon with the results of our findings, which is the right-of-way is indeed there. It's a public right-of-way. The township engineering department confirmed that, the current tax maps show that. So we won't be encroaching on any other private property which would require an easement. And again, that documentation would be subject to review in concurrence by the board's engineer. And then finally, there was a request by the fire marshal to provide fire lane striping, and I don't recall if we stated on the record at the last hearing, but we would comply with their suggestion to provide signage and striping along those areas, which would be designated fire lanes beyond where the parking and driveways are for the units.
Okay. Questions? David?
Yeah, just a couple. You were going to indicate, sorry, call from the last hearing, the number and location of the car charging station?
Yes, we are proposing a car charging station in this parking area that's immediately adjacent to the community building, recreational, the onsite recreational service area. One charging station that would be placed between two parking spaces, so it would be suitable for two cars to be charged. That would be along Amwell Road. And then, I think it would be stated at the last hearing also, is that any unit with a garage would have the ability to have a charging from within the garage. This would be, I'll say, a public station.
Okay.
Also, I think, David, I neglected to say in my testimony just a minute ago about the trees. Of a total of five, 351 onsite trees, we're removing 231 of those. That's the 230 trees that are disturbed is what results in the math per the township's tree mitigation ordinance, that we replace those trees, that 230, with 560, 16 plantings. But that also requires a technical variance because there is in the tree mitigation section of the ordinance, a limitation of 20% maximum tree disturbance. The numbers for 230 trees out of 351 results in a disturbance of 66% of the trees. So we need a relief from that as well.
Was one other discussion potentially widening the eastern driveway with 30 feet? There was some discussion with Mr. Euro about that?
Yeah, we agreed to do that in accordance with Mr. Euro's suggestion in his review.
Okay, so that would add another bearing?
That's right, right. Right now, we already need relief for the easterly driveway, which is wider than 24 to accommodate the restrictions for the right-in, right-out turning movement per the county's requirements. And then, what you're referring to is our easterly driveway, which right now is code compliant at 24 feet wide. But we'd agree to Mr. Euro's suggestion to widen it to 30, to the point where it then would neck down to 24 right by the first apartment building.
Okay, and there was also, I believe, some potential waivers from the lighting requirements. Perhaps at zero at certain of the landscaped areas, is that still the case?
That, you know, there was, there were, there was areas we spoke of within this courtyard area where we don't, we have a play area and play structure and some walks, and we would enhance the lighting in that area, but we wouldn't quite bring it up to the minimum township standard. What we're envisioning is that wouldn't be an area where there would be after-dark use, but it would be more soft lighting to provide for security, but not yet, you know, like, I'll say, promote or enhance the ability to use the playground equipment when it wouldn't be appropriate in the evening.
That's all I have, thanks.
Any quick comments from the dais? Questions?
I would just ask, like, is there any update on the permits with the GP2, the flood hazard area, individual permit, and a transition area waiver?
Yes, we've had communication with DEP. What came out of that communication with DEP was the changes we actually reported to the board that we were working on at the last hearing on April 11th, which was the relocation of that stormwater discharge. And we're having additional discussions with DEP with regards to the specifics of the plantings that we placed in that open space area because part of that area is within the wetland buffer. So we haven't secured the permits yet, but we are fully anticipating and expecting that those permits would be issued.
Yeah, so that would be a condition of approval?
Correct, absolutely. We actually, and this is again, I'll say, a housekeeping item, and we already agreed to it as, you know, at our last hearing, but since the last hearing, we went, the applicant went back and met with the township's public schools transportation supervisor, reported that the planning board's recommendation would be that buses pickup not be along Amwell Road, but be within the community itself. And I can provide, as a matter of record, a May 6th letter that was endorsed by that transportation supervisor that agreed to move the pickup for schoolchildren within the community itself in the area immediately adjacent to that common recreational facility area, near Building 1.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Any more additional comments, questions? Okay, I guess I'll take a motion to open up the public. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for a second.
Okay, who in favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness's testimony, either from tonight or from April 11th, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and keep the mic very close.
... Is this an open forum?
Sit down. Take your turn.
Susan Gulliford Hunt Club wrote, "I have a question on the additional trees to be planted on other properties owned by the applicant. Are these additional trees being put on those properties? Or are you just replacing trees that have already died or been removed for some other reason?"
These are properties that have been developed a number of years ago. So we don't have an inventory of, these are 30, 40-year-old apartment complexes, and we feel that this plantings would be a suitable place to enhance those areas. There's not, I'm not aware of any enforcement action against any of those other communities by the township zoning officer, that there's been some disturbance of areas that shouldn't have been disturbed, and this is, part of our intent is to mitigate for that. That's not at all, yeah.
That just seemed a little self-serving to, as you said, make other properties owned by the same applicant worth more money because they'll have nicer plantings. Just one other question, the, I got in a few minutes late. The exit onto Amwell Road, the one that's toward Auto Zone, was that, I was trying to remember, is that left-hand turn only?
No, that's right-in, right-out only.
Right-in, right-out, okay.
So no left turn, in or out.
Okay, because I was there today, went by there around 4, and traffic from the Piney Woods Light was backed up past that exit, so the left out of there wouldn't be happening.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to question a witness?
Yep, Angus, I'm the one that's going to take the pump and gas pipe for these Mexicans that are going to live next door.
Please state your name and...
Angus, or ENG, yes?
Go to the mic, go to the mic.
Angus, 378 Amwell Road, first name's Robert. Board, what am I allowed to talk about, or I don't want to go out of order here?
You can question, ask any questions of this witness regarding his testimony.
Engineering and site maintenance.
Engineering. Who's going to monitor all these trees that are going to be off-site? Because I can tell you right now what's going to happen. They're going to get left behind. I'm going to call the town. The town's going to say, we're understaffed, we don't have anybody to monitor the trees off-location. Now, with trees, with the subject of trees, what is this guy going to do for the Anguses? Because the Anguses basically are taking the gas pipe here, the buffer zone. We need deer-resistant trees alongside, I don't know if it's the north side or the south side. I never, I never entered in the Cub Scout. But it's 378 Amwell Road, it's the last man standing over there. You follow, the one with the mannequins on the front lawn? That's me, okay? Ride by there. This weekend, there's going to be five of them, okay? There's going to be more.
Let me answer your questions. You're on the east side. I am a Boy Scout. The offsite trees would be treated just like the onsite trees, where they would be inspected with their installation. And typically, there's a maintenance, there's a two-year guarantee that the trees have to go through, so that would be the same. And the installation of those trees would be inspected just like the onsite trees. With regards to species, we continue to hunt for that elusive deer-resistant tree, but we work with the township professionals on selecting trees that are the highest ability to, you know, survive the local deer population, including the selection of the trees and the size of the trees, all in accordance with the township standards and the professionals' recommendations.
Well, the trees that, I, it really doesn't matter, the trees that are in front of the place or around the buildings. My main concern here is the, this buffer, that the 20-foot buffer that's going to go down the side of, per se, my house. You know, am I asking too much for better trees for the buffer than some rag tree that's probably not going to make it? And I also would like some kind of fence more towards the back because I don't, you know, what's going to decipher his tenants wandering over to 378? Do you follow?
Yeah, the buffer was specific in the type of plantings, evergreens, in that 20-foot buffer within the ordinance that was adopted by the township. We've complied with that requirement. We're not proposing a fence.
So what stops his tenants from wandering over?
Yeah, this mass of trees to the extent that it would keep it...
The trees are going to run the whole 975 feet long?
Yeah, that the buffer planting is entire length of the common property line, except for the portion where you get into the existing woods, and that would be undisturbed, where we're not proposing to cut down trees to plant new trees, for sure.
I would not expect, you know, the existing area to be tampered with. But my concern is, are you familiar with this property at all, or...
Oh, yes, yeah.
My main concern is where the pole barn is, you led the famous pole barn? That area there that runs all the way to the...
Well, let me highlight on the rendering, and maybe it's a little difficult to see, but this entire portion of the easterly boundary is all with a double row of evergreen trees within that 20-foot wide buffer. And that's, they're all 10-foot on center at the time of planting, so it's a pretty substantial evergreen buffer that's proposed.
Okay, now, am I out of line by asking the buildings that are going to be facing my house? Am I out, am I not in line with asking, are there going to be decks?
The architect will testify regarding the buildings next.
And that, that too will cover gas grills and barbecues and... Because I have a list of questions, because essentially, sir, I'm taking the gas pipe here. I'm the last person here. So, you know, I have a lot of questions, probably stupid to you, but you know what? I've lived there for 52 years, and you know what? I have no intentions of moving anytime soon. So, I need my questions answered, but I, this is not my forte to ask what questions at what time of the meeting.
It's just a matter of, I'm the site engineer, the architect is the professional that designed the building. He'd be more appropriate to answer questions regarding the building. Not, not any trying to not answer your questions at all, for sure.
No, but I don't want to be feeling left out when I leave the meeting tonight at 10 o'clock. Follow?
Yeah.
I'll answer your first question on your type of trees. I do have some qualifications in that area. You have American holly, eastern red cedar, Norway spruce, white pine, white spruce, Serbian spruce, and Colorado blue spruce, all would consider deer-resistant trees.
Yeah. But Sean, it's going to come down to a bunch of trees. And what's this guy willing to, you know, what's, what's this guy willing to participate in? I mean, you know, some of the trees that you listed are not, you know, are a little bit pricey, and we're not buying five trees here, you follow?
You're getting 117 trees along your property line.
So is, you know, I don't know how much trees are. You know more than anybody in this bill, in here. You know, 117 times, I don't know how much. Is this guy willing to participate? I think he should, although, you know what I'm saying?
Well, first of all, please hold the mic close to your mouth when you say that people need to hear. So I don't know what you mean by participate. So he's planting a buffer along the line of 117 trees in a double row, the entire length of the buildings, all of which are deer-resistant. To answer your question, what the cost is, a six-to-eight-foot tree, I believe, isn't, on the average, is about $250 a tree planted. So you want to do the math? You can do the math.
Is that, is this fellow behind me, is he willing to pay 250 times 117?
He has to, it's on the plan.
Now, who's going to be the one choosing the species of the tree over there?
It's already on the plan. This is, I'm reading right off the plan that's being submitted that would, that possibly be voted on by the board today.
Yeah, but you, Sean, you just, you just gave me without, you gave me seven or eight choices of trees. Is it going to be a...
It's all those trees mixed in.
Combination.
It's a combination of all those trees.
Oh, it's a combination?
It's, if you want the exact amounts...
No, 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 I just, you know, I thought it was all one species?
No, it's a mix of all those, of all those trees. On a plan, and they have to plant the tree per the plan. So if it says a Serbian spruce at spot X, it has to be a Serbian spruce at spot X.
Okay, thank you.
And then that would be inspected by the township to make sure it's done to that. Those...
Okay, I guess, is there a mulch involved too, or...
I'm sure, yes, they have to be mulched.
All right, thank you.
So unless there's...
We got one more.
I see someone running across.
Merrill Bisberg for Hickory Hillville. Both in this planning board meeting and in the plan for Hillsborough Village, which was...
Please keep the mic next to your mouth.
Both in this planning board application, and in the application for Hillsborough Village, which was approved since we last met on this application, there's been so much discussion about trees. And in the last application, and I think it's applicable here, there was no discussion, and it wasn't really brought forth that well, that Route 206 will probably be ours and not the state's once the bypass is done, the local portion of 206. I, I think rather than having the developer take this to another location that they own, like Susan was saying, why aren't, why aren't we asking for some help with developing our downtown, which required a center median with trees? This is what we're trying to achieve.
Well, we don't, right now, the township doesn't own anything in the downtown.
Pardon?
Township doesn't own existing 206.
No, but the town, the town will be taking over local 206 when the bypass is built. That was my understanding. That was mentioned at...
I'm not aware of it unless I'm changing the six months since I've left the Township Committee.
So is it certain that the state is going to continue to own local 206 after the bypass is done?
Put it this way, at this, at this point, there are no plans for Hillsborough to take over 206 once the bypass is done. It just becomes a local 206 still owned by the state and maintained by the state, i.e. paving, plant, plowing, et cetera.
Okay. Well, I think that to the extent that we are going to probably want to enhance our downtown...
And the reason for that is that then the taxes would have to pay for said, said maintenance of that street.
I understand that. That's why I bring it up, because I, I know it's a huge expense.
Exactly.
So if there, if there is any way these trees could be used to beautify our downtown, whether, you know, on 206, at the edge of the property, because this is a gateway into the, into the 206 area, or along 206 for some of the other developments, I just think we should be considering that, because...
Where, where would you plant them? Most of those places are going to be, if they're built, they're going to have their own planting requirement, so therefore, there's no reason to take their money, these trees, and plant, plant there, because the new builders would, that would develop that site, would have their own responsibility. And also, if you don't have the area for site triangles to place these trees for, for people aggressing in and out of that place, you do not want trees to, to, to block that. So I don't think that necessarily forcing trees, though I know, I feel that you allow them to make the area more beautified, but I think that that would be up to the, the ongoing projects that would be built on 206 to address that as they build.
Okay. Well, I mean, to the extent that some of these areas are close to downtown, I would think that when there are not site, site triangles to worry about, line of site triangles to worry about, we could consider that and be somewhat creative with trying to make this more of a downtown feel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other engineering or site plan questions, I'd like to introduce Mark Berkowski, our architect.
Okay.
As you recall, I believe he was qualified and sworn in at the last hearing, so we can just swear him in real quick one more time. Mr. Berkowski, you haven't had any license changes since our last meeting, have you?
No, I have not.
Okay. In connection with the April hearing, the board had some additional requests with respect to additional details with respect to the detailed floor plans, the affordable units, which units had garages, and all of the elevations. Could you explain to the board what we've labeled as A5? Could you first describe what A5 is, and can you go through your summary as to the additional supplemental renderings that have been provided to the board?
Yes. Exhibit A5 consists of 22 drawings, which are detailed floor plans indicating all the requests of schedules of which units are market rate, which are affordables, and which ones have garages. So all of these floor plans provide that detailed information. In addition, the second part of A5 are the building elevations, so details, elevation of each building on all four sides are also included.
And could you please review the numbers with respect to the market rate and affordable units?
Yes.
I understand there was one typographical error in, in last month's testimony with respect to the amount of three-bedroom. It's been reduced by one, I understand.
Yes, so just to, very area, on, on drawing A14, you see a complete summary of the affordables, bedroom size, and garages. Your engineer's report that was just issued referencing these drawings needed to be corrected. In Building 1, the affordable unit, Building 1, we have two, two bedrooms with no garage, and two, two bedrooms with garage. Item number three on that list is stricken. I think it's a typographical error and appears twice. Also, in Building 5, the correct number of those 14 market units, there are three one-bedroom units with garage and three one-bedroom unit without a garage. So that would correct the engineer's report, but it's everything that's shown on Exhibit 5, drawing A14. The other item that was questioned at the last hearing was the two-bedroom and den. I just want to clarify that again. The den unit consists of a low wall 36 inches high on one end and no door, so it is designated as a den, not to be used as a bedroom.
And could you address the side elevations to the west responsive to the public comment earlier with respect to decks and your understanding of any prohibition of outdoor grills on those decks?
Yes. By code, grills would not be allowed on decks. There has to be a separation to the buildings. The balconies that are indicated start at about 11 feet above finished floor. And there are patios on the first floor units.
Can you identify for the board which drawing number would be responsive to the westerly elevation?
On the west end would be Building 5 and Building 6.
And for the record, that would be what's labeled generally as A5, but also would be the subsection of A29 would be Building 5, A30 would be Building 5, and A31 and 32 would be Building 6. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I have no further questions for the architect.
I, I think the, the gentleman is on the east side of the, of the buildings.
It's the east side?
Not the west.
Still Building 5 and 6, though.
Okay, thank you.
But facing his property would be on the east side. So I think that's his concern, what the height over the trees into his house.
Yes, but it is Building 5 and 6.
Okay.
So can you describe what would, what would be facing the adjoining residential use to the east?
Again, that, that elevation on 5 and 6 does have some balconies, and again, they start at about 11 feet above finished floor.
Could you put the picture up on?
A29 would be, A29, here's the picture. A29.
Okay, so that, that would be facing...
Yes, that's the elevation that would be facing that neighbor.
Those decks are on the second floor?
Excuse me?
The decks, where, where are they located?
Yes, they start at about 11 feet. So here's a deck in this location.
Looks like there's six decks on that elevation.
What's, what's the elevation of the height from the ground to that?
Approximately 11 feet.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
And that's consistent with Building 6 as well?
Yes, that's correct.
For the elevation.
Good, thank you.
I have no further questions for the architect.
Bobberdaven, any questions? Okay. Any additional in the day?
I'm not, I'm not sure if this is the testimony of, of the architect, but, and I'm not sure if it was ever brought up, but the, the question I would have was the breakdown of the one, two, and three bedrooms, as to how that was determined as to the ratio of why there's 63 three-bedroom units versus that two to one.
It's a bit of a hybrid legal question, I would say, so I'm going to field that. That was part of the negotiated settlement with the township. The history of this goes back about five years, and Bob Hebel, I'm sure you all remember, was retired, developed the, the initial plans. And as part of the COA settlement, the, the applicant proposed this specific makeup with respect to the bedroom counts, based again on economics and market factors and agreements and contracts between the various parties involved in this. And that was the, we, the applicant used, and did not change, by the way, other than a typographical error, which reduces one three, one three-bedroom to a one-bedroom. That settlement agreement was effectuated by the Superior Court that anticipated and contemplated the specific site plan that, again, is, you know, substantially compliant and is fully compliant with the bedroom count with respect to this, with this application. And I should also note, and I think our planner will touch on this, township wanted a 25% set aside for COA, which, again, generally, it's a 15% set aside historically pursuant to COA, I'd say guidelines or historic ratios. So in increasing the COA ratio to 25%, the economics require additional higher bedroom counts for the, for the three bedrooms.
So essentially, you're saying it was determined by the, by the legal minds of...
I would say that instead of having...
Affordable housing and et cetera.
Instead of having two projects with 12 and a half percent set aside, or 15 and 10, we have one project with 25% set aside.
Because I thought that might come up, so that was, trying to just save the question for later.
And our planner will be able to address that if there's any additional questions with respect to the specific guidelines for, you know, the COA Uniform Housing Affordable Facility.
So with the dens here, I understood that one of the walls is a half-wall. We've got closets in all of them. Could turn into a loft type of bedroom. A little bit concerned about that.
It's a storage closet in a den.
Couldn't have designed storage closet somewhere else. Couldn't have designed the storage closet to be elsewhere, so it wouldn't be tempting.
I think the issue is, storage is always at a premium in apartments, so we try to get as much storage in the floor plans as possible.
I understand that. Just questioning why it needs to be in a den.
Well, I would suggest, and I believe Mr. Bernstein made a point at our April meeting, that there, there would contemplate, we could contemplate a deed restriction with respect to prohibiting the use of the den as a bedroom. Every municipality has the same issue with respect to how many people can fit in, in a unit, but we would certainly comply with the deed restrictions as well as the, you know, unlike residential house, single-family residential houses, this would be managed professionally by onsite staff who would be able to enforce the compliance of the deed restrictions, as well as, of course, your zoning official, who would have that authority to enforce the deed restrictions, just like any other residential restriction on occupants.
How, how would you enforce that? Because once you have occupancy, it's very difficult to get, judges are not going to throw people out on the street if they violated that. So I'm just curious, how are you going to ensure?
Well, the, I would say that the township would have two elections of remedies. They could either go through the municipal court to enforce a zoning violation, or they could seek other remedy through other enforcement actions that are commonly used by municipalities to enforce ordinances.
On, on the rental agreement, on the contract, it should have how many people, so it would be in violation, and I believe there are people that could come out and evict them.
You're not getting them evicted, because I've, I've seen this, I've, I've fielded phone calls over 15 years worth. Judges do not throw people out. They will not split families up once they violate it. So that's why, you know, I share Mr. Bernstein's sentiments about closets and dens. You know, once it's there, I think that's...
Well, the owner of the property would be, I would say, liable for any violations, not the tenants. So the, that would give, and I do this quite often for other municipalities that I represent, we, we would certainly be able to address that through code enforcement or municipal court. That would put the bonus on the owner, landlord, to then seek remedy, private remedy, there, at their cost through the Superior Court to, to compel compliance with any restrictions that are placed on the occupancies.
Counselor? Yes, sir?
Guidance?
I tend to agree with your observation from having done this for some 40 years, that the courts are willing to move someone out for an occupancy question. I think that the deed restriction that was proposed would be one of the things that would be absolutely required. I don't know if it's been looked at to see if the same storage units could be, could, could or could not be located elsewhere, but the township has limited, limited remedies and resources to enforce the rule. I do concur with counsel that a remedy against the owner as the landlord for the violation has a lot more incentive than enforcement directly against the tenant, which I would not recommend.
Also, a number of years ago, the homes that were there, or that are still there, they turned it into a rooming house, and we had people from the state that came out and did the eviction. So they do evict them, even though I understand it is a little bit more difficult, but there are laws in place to be able to control that.
Is, is there any possibility, I don't know how long the, that half-wall is in the, dividing those areas off, of cutting those back significantly so that it creates more of an open flow and less of an opportunity to, to segment those into a, a bedroom-type facility? You know, it looks like there's maybe a three or four-foot opening there, possibly bringing that back another three or four feet, so you would at least make it appear to be more of an open living room-type facility, because everybody likes the open-flow concept now, of course, to all the shows that you watch.
I would say that, I'm just looking at my client, he would have no problem with that, as well as adding additional language acceptable to counsel with respect to the leasing as well. So we can have the deed restrictions, we can have, pull back the, the wall, and, and while, have all the enforcement... and while we have all the enforcement remedies available, again, against the owner of the property, not against the individual tenants.
Counsel, I would also, you mentioned the lease restrictions and be amenable to making sure that ultimately the leases themselves make note of it for the units that have the den with a reduced wall.
Right, that's correct, and that would be subject to legal counsel's approval with respect to the language in the lease regarding the den.
That'll work for me. Any other additional comments? Okay, so now I will open it up to the floor. If anyone would like to have questions of the architect, please come forward. State your name and address again for the record, and keep the mic very close because it doesn't pick up sound.
Robert Angus, three seventy-eight. Buildings five and building six, low-income house, low-income there? Or is it all the high-rent district?
Exhibit or drawing A seventeen shows the mix of units, so it will be a mix of affordables. It's not low rent, it's affordable units. There's a very large income level in that, in five and six.
But I need to know, because those two buildings are going to be overlooking where I, you know, where I live, so I'm, you know, I'm concerned on my neighbors, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, understood.
You call it affordable, I call it low-income, you know what that brings to the neighborhood? Okay, with dens and closets, you know, come on. Why do you, let me ask you something, you cruise Anamore Road. Why do you think there's an Econoline van in Godfrey's driveway? You want the punchline? Because twenty-five Chinese people live in that house, and the township attorney writes the lease. And everybody that lives there works at Golden Dragon, or the Chinese food store over there on Anamore Road, because I experienced that every morning.
Now we're getting testimony.
That's not testimony, let's just focus on his testimony.
But I'm concerned, Carl, I'm concerned about buildings five and six, because buildings five and six are piercing over our house. Like he said before, you have a deck, you know, no gas grill, so that's a plus, but I mean, you know, I don't want to wake up to La Bamba music, you know what I'm saying?
I think one thing that should be noted, and this is a legal issue. In two thousand nineteen, the Affordable Housing Professionals issued regional income limits by household size for these COA units, so a family of four would have a low income of fifty-nine thousand and a high income of ninety-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. So I would suggest that that's a relatively, this is, hundred and Somerset and Middlesex County are the highest COA unit ranges in the state, so maybe that may impact your analysis of the type of people that need to qualify for these units. Nearly a hundred thousand dollars a year annual income is a range that would qualify these individuals for COA units, based upon-
Yeah, but, you know, the number's the number, and I agree with you, sir, but it's going to come down to, you know, he ain't making any money if those buildings are vacant, so he's got to take somebody in.
No, actually, I can go through the, he doesn't get to pick the tenants that go in there. That is handled on behalf of the township through the Somerset County, I don't know whatever official Affordable Housing-
Affordable Housing Administration.
Administration, so we actually contract out with a third party that will select and vet those tenants, so the owner does not get the opportunity to do that himself. Also, the other thing, another qualification besides income, because I know this is something that's important, you actually have to have good credit to get in. Someone with bad credit, that tanked, they're not going to qualify for affordable housing. So it's not Section Eight housing.
I know.
Along, it's not housing assistance, so they have to have good credit, you know, there's just, you know, I'm aware of someone that, you know, that went through something like that, and if your credit's not up to par, you're not going to get qualified for affordable housing. And just to let you know, I mean, you know, we have affordable housing on Triangle Road. I don't know if you know where that's located.
Yes.
Okay, so I've lived outside of that, or adjacent to that for twenty-five years now, so, you know, it is kept very well. You know, they abide by, you know, at least my experience, all, you know, all of our noise ordinances or anything along those lines have never had any other additional troubles than any, you know, single-family home, I'll call it, so.
Yeah, Carl, I know I'm out of line, but I didn't know that units five and six were going to be somewhat, because my bedroom window is going to be at the middle between the buildings five and six. Now, Carl, then help me, because, you know, don't spring me off here.
Keep the microphone in there.
Carl, am I out of line by having this guy, maybe we can get a trees that are, you know, because he said that the decks are eleven feet tall, so when you're standing on the deck, you're going to be piercing in my bedroom window, okay? Am I asking too much for maybe some kind, a taller species of a tree? So people don't pierce in my bedroom window? That is my bedroom window, Carl, and yes, I have curtains, but still, you know what I'm saying?
I'm not aware with tree species here and what limits are, but I'll call that-
I'll go back to what was planted. The evergreen trees specked out are six to eight feet. They typically grow at, full rate will be twenty-five to thirty feet tall when they're grown. They grow about six to eight inches a year, sometimes a foot a year.
Yeah, but Sean-
So they're not going to be eleven feet high in a year.
No, I understand that, but-
But you really can't plant a thirty-foot tree, it's unrealistic.
No, I understand that, Sean, but Sean, I mean, you said you're going to, a different species, but when you get to buildings five and six, you see what I'm saying?
Well, the, no, the trees I'm talking about are the trees between five and six in your property. They're evergreen trees, they're six to eight feet tall, probably closer to eight, because usually most of them are, and they'll get to be twenty-five or thirty feet.
Okay.
So if you go down along, for example, down Triangle Road, all those giant white pines that are thirty-five, forty feet tall, those were six to eight foot when they were planted. I know that because we planted them thirty, or twenty years ago.
There's affordable in other buildings also, I believe. Yeah, it's not just in-
No, I understand, but I would like to be, you know, I'd like to have some kind of lay of the land over there, you know, because I, you know, I lived there, and, you know, and you know, there was, you had to qualify where, how much money you need to make, because I don't want riffraff over there, you know, I, I have another question, but what's up with the pet policy? Is there dogs allowed over there?
Saved by the bill. I don't know that question, that you could ask as a question.
Is that now, or do I have to come back?
What's the question?
Pet policy, are dogs and cats permitted, yes or no?
It's private property.
Cats don't bark. Possibly you might want to talk to the owners outside the meeting, and maybe about your concerns, and maybe they might be considered to do something for you in specific on your property to alleviate your concerns of the overhang.
Well, my concern is this, I don't want my backyard to be the new dog park, you know what I'm saying?
There's no, certainly, certainly there's not going to be any trespass on your property.
No, but I mean, the dog gets out occasionally, you know, and you have absentee pet owners, you know what I'm saying? Nobody's a, not everybody's a responsible pet owner, but I don't want, you know, my favorite pastime, I don't want to be, you know, cleaning and curbing somebody else's dog, you know, and since he doesn't want in, and no one here wants to entertain the idea of offense, I mean, you know.
Do any other neighbors have dogs?
There's nobody left, Sean, I'm the last person there.
All along Homestead Road, any of those neighbors have dogs?
Sean, Simon's Road is a cluster, it's either foreclosure or rentals over there.
But do they have dogs? Do the people, I know there's houses on, right next to you that have, just all the way down around the backyard.
The house on the corner is a renter, there's no pets allowed. The second house, Bedore, that's in foreclosure. The third house in is in foreclosure. The fourth house in is-
But that doesn't mean that that wouldn't change, and they might have dogs in the near future. It's just like anything else.
But all those houses that you're referring to all have, are all have fences around their backyard. Bedore, Petruski, Gavitt's old house, that, and they're all have fences around the yard.
Fences aren't permanent, they can come down. So to answer your question, they do allow pets, but if you're concerned about the overhang and the people peering into your windows, possibly you might approach them and see if they might help you out in some other way, but as far as the buffer is concerned, I believe that there's inadequate planting that eventually will screen the whole building from your view.
Thank you, Sean.
Any additional questions from the public of this witness? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Berkowski.
Thank you.
As indicated in my introduction, this application also necessitates some variances and waivers, so I have Art Bernard, who has not appeared yet, so we do need to swear him in and qualify him.
Can you get the mic, sorry?
Art Bernard, last name is B E R N A R D.
Mr. Bernard, could you briefly give your qualifications as a professional planner?
Sure, I'm the managing member of my own firm. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Reiters University. I'm a licensed professional planner with over forty years of experience in land use planning and affordable housing. For eight and a half of those years, I served the council on affordable housing, leaving as its executive director in nineteen ninety-four, and since then I've worked for twenty-seven municipalities in various consulting capacities. I've worked with my private sector clients before local boards all over the state. I've served as an expert witness in most of the state's visages, and I also serve as the Superior Court as a special master in six municipalities, and I served as an expert witness in the Middlesex County and Mercer County Fair Share Trials.
Members of board, I'm tendering Art Bernard as our professional planner.
Okay, unless there's any objections, we will accept.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go through the questions, or do you want to just narrate this?
No, I think we, maybe we can have a little colloquy as we're going through this. I, my testimony is on the variances. I think we're going to rely on the engineer and the architect testimony for the waivers. Do, should we, before we go into the variances, should we talk about affordable housing a little bit, and what it is and what it's not?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, all right. So why don't we just do that? Because there's at least some, I think the board is well acquainted with what affordable housing is and what it's not, but perhaps some of the public isn't, so let's just go through that. This application includes a set aside for affordable housing, and what a set aside is, is a percentage of the total units that are made to be affordable. The affordable units are reserved for low- and moderate-income households. Now, low and moderate, they're not only reserved for low- and moderate-income households, but they're priced to be affordable to them, and they're deed restricted, so they remain occupied by and affordable to low- and moderate-income households over time, and that time period is at least, typically at least over thirty years. Now, affordable housing is affordable to households earning anywhere from, typically from thirty percent of median income to eighty percent of median income for various regions in the state. Median income changes depending on what housing region we're in and the size of the household. We happen to be in the region that has the highest income limits, and I believe, for example, in this housing region, the range for a four-person household actually would be a little bit lower than Mr. O'Grady talked about. For a four-person household, a very low-income person would earn as little as thirty-five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, and the highest a person could earn to live in one of these units is a shade under ninety-five thousand dollars. So I think that the main point that Mr. O'Grady was trying to make is that these are working people, and that low- and moderate-income households are not a fringe population, and I'm sure that we've either all been there, or we know people that are, because it is forty percent of the population. They span a variety of professions, including but not limited to teachers and nurses and social workers and paralegals and firefighters. They include young people starting out and older people on fixed incomes. They are people that work but are denied housing in large part due to the lack of land zone for multifamily housing. And in order to get an affordable unit, the chairman is quite correct, they must go through credit checks and criminal background checks like any other resident, and there's no reason why they wouldn't be an asset to the community just like the other citizens that live in Hillsboro now. As the chairman said, this is not government-subsidized housing. The households are obligated to pay their own rents, and the idea is that the private sector developers receive density bonuses and the ability to create enough market units to subsidize the reduced rents. So, and the rents, the typical rent, I mean, the very lowest-income rents will run from like, around five hundred dollars for a one-bedroom unit, and six hundred dollars for a two-bedroom, and seven hundred dollars for a three-bedroom unit, but the average rents in the community will average about one thousand dollars a month. And the market units are there designed to allow those rents to be reduced. Now, we require three variances that I'm aware of tonight, that I'm prepared for tonight. As Mr. O'Grady said, this is a hundred and twenty-six-unit inclusionary development with thirty-one affordable units. The set aside is twenty-four point six percent, where the normal standard in an inclusionary development with grandness is only fifteen percent. The variances that we need, we need a variance for two curb cuts on Route five fourteen. The ordinance only allows one when there's frontage of less than five hundred feet, and our frontage is a shade less than four hundred and thirty-one feet. We also need a variance for the width of our westernmost curb cut, that right in, right out, that Mr. Troutman and Mr. Ford talked about is thirty-one feet, I believe, right now, whereas the ordinance permits only twenty-four feet. And then, as I recall, Mr. Maski, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that we need a variance for taking down more than twenty percent of the trees on site.
Yeah, before you leave the driveways, though, because they're going to widen the other driveways, so technically the variance is both driveways will be wider than twenty-four feet.
Both driveways will be wider than twenty-four feet, and-
And yes, the question about the tree mitigation, whether clearance, if you're exceeding, actually sixty percent clearance, you're at sixty-six, so that would be a variance. You would need a waiver for planting them off-site.
And I believe, I'm relying on Mr. Ford for planting them off-site, I think he's addressed the waiver. But in terms of the variance for the clearance, let's start with that one first, and the municipal land use law provides for variance relief when the strict application of the ordinance creates an undue hardship based on the physical characteristics of the site. In this case, the physical characteristic of the site creating the hardship is the presence of a lot of trees on a site that's designated for affordable housing to accommodate a hundred and twenty-six housing units, and the hardship would be that without the relief, the applicant would not be able to help the township comply with its affordable housing obligation. With regards to the relief for the driveways, the- With regards to the relief for the driveways, the reason for providing greater space between curb cuts in general is to minimize potential confusing turning movement conflicts. The applicant's main curb cut is aligned with the entrance to Brideway, which is an excellent location for the main entrance. The second entrance to the west is a right in and right hand out. The second curb cut is desirable for distributing traffic and facilitating circulation of garbage trucks and buses and emergency vehicles. That second entrance is really not feasible or desirable off of Steinman's Road due to the wetlands and the impact of bringing traffic into a fairly secluded residential area. I believe you've heard Mr. Troutman testify that the western right in and right out will not result in confusing turning movements. And you've heard Mr. Troutman testify that the county has unofficially approved that western right in and right out. With regard to the width of the curb cuts, the entrance and exit of the western curb cut is well-defined, so the extra width should not result in confusing turning movements. The wider opening facilitates the entrance of garbage trucks, buses, and emergency vehicles. And perhaps most importantly, the county with jurisdiction over the road is insisting on the increased width. I also understand in terms of the main entrance that was proposed as to comply at 24 feet, that the engineer's review on page three recommends that it be 30 feet at the intersection with Ammeral Road and taper down to the 24 feet. So what we're proposing, the wider curb cuts, would be consistent with your engineer's review. In addition, your ordinance acknowledges that a wider curb cut is acceptable with landscape medians when the site has more than 250 feet of frontage. This, we're not proposing a landscape median, but this site does have well over 250 feet of frontage with 431 feet of frontage. So in my opinion, all three of the variances can be approved based on the C2 criteria, where boards can approve relief when a proposal advances the purposes of the municipal land use law and the benefits of the proposal substantially outweigh the detriment. And the appellate division has instructed local boards to consider the benefits of the entire proposal with C2 variances, not just the benefits of a specific variance. In this case, the benefits of the proposal include that the site is making a substantial contribution to your affordable housing obligation, and it's also promoting the town center concept with its architecture. The advantage of the traffic relief is that both variances facilitate traffic flow in and out of the site without creating confusing traffic movements. The advantage of the tree relief is that it allows the applicant to address your affordable housing obligation. So I would conclude that the proposal advances a series of municipal land use law purposes, including Purpose H, which involves promoting the free flow of traffic. Purpose I, which involves promoting a desirable visual environment. The design of the buildings fits well into your town center concept. Purpose J, which involves conserving the valuable resources of the state, in this case by replanning the required number of trees in a timely manner elsewhere in the As well as purposes A, Purpose E, and Purpose G. And if you read those three purposes from front to back, you get two main thoughts. One is basically promoting the appropriate use of land and the other is for, you're promoting the appropriate use of land for some sort of public benefit. In terms of this being an appropriate use of land, well, the use is a permitted use in the zone, and I think it's sound planning to provide for higher density housing in a mixed-use area close to your town center. I think the public benefits because of improved circulation, because of the implementation of your town center concept, because of the replacement of the trees, and because of the production of affordable housing. So that would be my positive proofs in terms of the three variances. In terms of the negative criteria, I see no substantial detriment to the public good. The two entrances and their width enhance circulation for people that live in the community as well as the circulation for garbage trucks, buses, and emergency vehicles. And it does so without confusing turning movements entering or exiting from Ammeral Road. I see there's no substantial detriment associated with removing the trees because the applicant has offered to provide substantial tree plantings at locations that it owns and controls. I find no substantial detriment to the zone plan because your ordinance actually permits a wider curb cut than 24 feet with more than 250 feet of frontage. The uses are permitted uses, and so I view the relief for traffic circulation and tree removal as more like fine-tuning the ordinance rather than a substantial break from your zoning principles. And of course, the project includes affordable housing, and I think that the zone plan is always promoted when a town helps addresses its affordable housing obligation. So with regards to the variances, I think that the tree removal variance is justified based on the C1 criteria or hardship criteria and the C2 criteria. I find that the two variances for the curb cuts are justified based on the C2 criteria, and I would urge the board to grant the relief.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Anyone in the dais? No. Okay, then I guess I will open it up to the public. If there's anyone who would like to question the testimony of the witness, please come forward. No one's rushing, so I think you did a good job.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion of closing. Is anyone coming?
No, but I just want to make sure councillor's resting first.
We're all set.
So you're resting?
We've concluded our testimony and the applicant rests.
Mr. O'Grady, I was thinking after our testimony here and the question that our neighbor here has about the, he's concerned about the view from the neighbors and then also with the request to plant trees off-site at the owner's. Would the owner be willing to possibly plant a secondary buffer, say 10 trees, near the neighbor's house at his quest or spot that would give him a secondary buffer for privacy as, instead of the 10 trees going to his site?
Mr. Lepanti, the applicant would certainly agree to an additional 10 trees so long as they're not immediately cut down.
No, it would be with the advice from the planner and also with the owners to where they would be placed, that to his satisfaction to create a secondary buffer from the height of the homes that, on his use.
So some additional pine trees would be proposed by the applicant?
Yes. Is that something that you would like to get some additional screening?
I don't want to be restricted to one species of a tree. Like just for one sake, I don't want to be restricted to.
It would, it would be of the same trees that were, Mr. Ignisaw?
So just for clarity, purpose, within the selection provided by Mr. Lepanti on the plan.
Correct.
That would be the selection of trees that the applicant would be offering to plant on the adjacent residential property.
Okay. Happy with that?
Thank you, Sean.
Okay. That's all I had.
Let councillor finish writing his notes. Okay, so I guess we are ready for a resolution or proposed motion. I know, there's a lot.
The board could then consider a resolution for the.
Use the microphone, please councillor.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to check notes. The board could consider the adoption or rejection of the applicant's application as testified to at the April meeting, subject to exhibits A1 through A5 in the testimony, including the agreement as to conditions in the engineering and traffic reports along with the testimony, and including the consideration of C1 or 2 variances for the reasons stated in the record as to the required variances. With regard to the waivers, the applicant is proposing the waiver subject to the conditions as laid out in prior testimony. The planner did not rely on those. Subject to all of those conditions, including the agreement which was made tonight on the record with regard to the Essinger property and an additional screening of 10 trees that would particularly screen the home more than the rest of the property. And subject to all of those conditions, the board could consider the resolution.
Okay, and including the whole deed restriction and.
Let me add, the applicant has also agreed to a deed restriction as to those units that contain a den to limit in the design the extension of the half-den wall and also to either a deed restriction or requirement in some of the other documents that went finalized, that the leases for those particular units having a den would restrict them to use as two bedrooms, the den not to be used as a bedroom.
And the owner liable? And the owner liable for the infringement?
That would be according to law. So the restriction would re, and in accordance with all other statutes, regulations, rules, and ordinances.
Okay.
You may adjutate in that motion.
You didn't leave anything else? Okay.
I have some sticky notes, but we've covered those.
All right. So based on what councillor just offered as a consideration of a resolution, is anyone interested in moving this forward?
I'll move the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Are there any final comments from the dais? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Scoville?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Committee man Lepanti?
I'd like to thank the applicant for being patient and being open with the public and helping the neighbor, and I'd like to say that, yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Chair's rush.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, best of luck. So with that, we do have a meeting Thursday.
June 6.
June 6. And it looks like we have, we have another application that's for the affordable.
Site plan application for Three Ronson LLC, Village Point, Hillsborough Center.
Okay. All right, I just need to ask, hey, Neil?
Neil.
I'm sorry, what?
Just, we got a meeting June 6. Would you be here for that?
It's the Ronson one, I think.
Yes, Three Ronson.
Yeah, because there's a good chance I won't be.
Okay.
All right. So I will just ask the board members that if you're not able.
Locking the camera.
Huh?
No.
The board members, if you're not able to make it, to please let the planning office know as soon as possible. And with that, I guess I am going to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Happy Memorial Day, everybody.